They would, these proposals should not cause a deficit. They should make you whole. That's the plan. So in other words, the annual deficit, not the accumulated, but the annual. That's how they were designed.
The accumulated doesn't, right, that won't be affected by this?
Well, it depends.
Is this kind of like plugging the leak, but not getting the water out?
Honestly, when, when you look at how you amend rates, you don't, you can't begin to predict how much people are going to use. So while there's a little bit of an extra amount of money there, it's not tremendous, Ryan. It's not to erase the accumulated deficit. But until you really implement, you don't know if people are going to use more water, if they're going to use less, if MDC rates go up. I mean, there's a lot of different factors. These, these suggestions would stem the annual deficit. And their, their plan, and if you look at the analysis, I have the analysis for the water rate increase. And the one that I'm passing on sewer also has the analysis. And for water, this analysis, Ryan, shows that we would meet the 1.389 million dollars budget with these expected results. But because at the, yes, so that's what that would do. And that's what the analysis for the sewer shows as well.
And then, I mean, we'll have to address the deficit at a later point, I think. That's kind of what, you know, we needed, we needed something to at least stop the bleeding. And I think that's what we have here. So I think this is good.
That's the purpose of this right now, so that we're at least even. And it will be owed the deficit, which is still low.
Susan, from the last meeting, did you change anything as far as the, the numbers go?
For water?
Yeah, for water.
I don't believe we did. Did we, Rick?
Some of the rent, what's that change?
Oh, yes, thank you, Rick, yes.
But those, you know, the grand scheme of things.
They're incidental.
The grand, they're not set up.
No.
No.
It takes those little houses along, the numbers or meter charges and your user charge.
Is that, is that fire hydrant charge kind of in line with other companies? Or is that still, is that low?
I think it's in line, Rick. We looked at some other towns. And that would be for the public use. Oh, which, which are you asking about?
I was looking at the, I'm on the water on the, the 250 to 250.
Yes.
Two hundred dollars of.
Those are, yeah, those are private.
Those are private?
Wait, 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 wait.
If you're looking at page eight, section eight.
No, no, Rick, he's looking at, what are you looking at, Chris?
The water rate review one.
The water rate review, Rick?
Townsend, Ellis.
Yes. Want to look at that sheet?
We read which one, which number? Oh, the 250 you have.
Yeah, 200 per hydrant, a total of 250.
Yeah, it's, there's a broad, there's a broad range of what, you know, it ranges anywhere from nothing to four hundred dollars, depending on the town, whatever you're looking at. It's in the ballpark. It's in the ballpark.
So if that number, if, if this were even and that number were higher, in theory, you would be paying, that could be allocated against the deficit, is that right?
It could be, but I think, I personally think that that charge in itself is too high, myself. But that's my personal, I mean, what does it cost us actually? What does the general taxpayer, 50% of the taxpayers who don't see any benefit from that? That could be high. If it's anything, it's high. But again, that's my personal.
That's true.
For example, someone out in the gray village lake area, or out Panfield Hill Road, or out top the hill road, they hear a fire hydrant. It doesn't cost, it costs minimally for us to maintain the hydrants. And the water used on fire protection, for example, on a given year, I mean, I looked at five years, what was the actual cost of the water used on fires? Probably the max was about a thousand dollars a year. And that would be into something cost like that, a public fire hydrant. So there's not practically a good basis for a lot of cost for general taxation fairness. That's a fairly significant cost.
Well, somehow we got to figure, down the road at some point, we got to figure out how to get at that deficit aspect of it. If we can get the other part with the bed, we got to get there.
And I think you have to look at the longer term. You have very few customers in sewer, and you have very few customers in water. And the costs are high for all the regulations that we have to implement. And they're borne by fewer, few people. And these rates are not low, if I put it in that way. And we, we do have, and someone had asked me this too, in terms of debt that's owed to the town, there is several accounts that are delinquent. We review them on a prescribed periodic manner. And we, when we can, meters are turned off. And when we can't, the deficit accumulates until such time as we're able to then do a lien sale. And then, that's when people can, what was the problem?
Carl's on the, on the, on the efficiency end, as far as, and Rick is here too, I know. I think a couple of water people here, but anyway, on the efficiency end, has there been a recent look at what possibilities are in terms of saving money on water loss, for example, leakage, is there any?
Rick could probably address that better. I mean, I, we. Yeah, because I know we're, we're lead that way.
On the efficiency end, on water and sewer, you are operating, we have a spending freeze in, in effect right now. We've had a spending freeze in effect for a couple of years. I mean, we, we're down to bare bones. I mean, we're, what you see in your budget is, is what is necessary to operate either or system in the minimum means. And what you need to realize is that this particular increase that you're seeing basically keeps us at basically a spending freeze. In the meantime, your infrastructure is aging. So everything's getting older, for example, your sewage treatment plant. This particular increase basically shows a hundred thousand dollars in capital. I can tell you that I would propose, I'm going to propose to you in your capital budget, significantly more than that, which we're going to need to spend to stay in compliance. So to answer your question, efficiency, we're, we're about as lean and mean as you can get, and you've cut the, the third person out of the water budget that I really needed and was hoping for. So we're, we're, there is no more cutting of costs that I can see on the expense side without really and truly jeopardizing your permits for both through the state DEEP, through DPH, I mean, you're operating bare bones. And as I'd said to you the other night, I believe, operating the way we are, there's an awful lot of responsibility on both these sides, fire, health and safety. I mean, we've been there. We've had total coliform, we've had some issues. And operating the way we are, and it needs to be said, you're, you're on, you're really on thin ice. And it's just a matter of time. So you, you folks need to provide the proper resources to, to properly run these facilities. I mean, we don't have a choice, we have them. If you're going to operate them, you're operating them with these, even with these rate increases, you're, you're right about bare bones.
Which is why many systems are, with towns our size, are typically not run only by the town. They're regional efforts. And, I mean, I, I've been, and you have been for a long time, looking at these rates. It's not just this year. This is something that we've looked at for decades. And have been saying that, yes, the infrastructure needs improvement. Well, people who pay for it are the people that are on the water and sewer. And the rates are getting to a point where it is less and more and more difficult. Let me put it that way. And many, many communities, look at what Middletown's doing. Middletown is going to Madison. And they've gotten a tremendous amount of grant money. And they're also infusing a tremendous amount of general fund money. That's not borne only by water users. And Marlboro has connected to the sewer district that's located in East Hampton, the facilities in East Hampton. And I believe it's a large percentage, maybe 60% is borne by the general taxation, and 40% or somewhere in that range, grants and users. So there's a lot of different ways of looking at how you fund water and sewer infrastructure. But when you, how many customers do we have in sewer?
Twenty, thank you.
All sewer?
Sewer is 1,500.
Fifteen hundred.
1,500 customers have to bear the entire cost. And in water, there's about 2,500.
Twenty-three thirty-four.
Excuse me, 2,300 customers that are bearing 1.3 million dollars in cost. So it really begs the question as to how we manage these departments, which is something that, that some of you have been talking about. And I have brought to you other options. And I think, just like we talked about sidewalks and how we manage sidewalks, got to talk about water and sewer and how it's managed and delivered. Because there's, there's a point at which you just can't raise rates high enough to pay for the entire system, unless you make some type of a change. Either major expansion, or sharing with another town, or a regional effort. I don't have the answers, but what I'm trying to present to you as the sewer and water authority is that you have to look at this very seriously. The rates that are on this page that only meet the costs are substantial increases. They're substantial.
But they're still in line with other towns, are they not?
What's your reference point on that?
I remember we went over, I think in our packets, we had comparisons to other towns. And I, I don't remember there being much difference as far as what we were discussing. I mean, I could be wrong, but aren't we still in line with other towns as far as rates go?
We're a little on the high side.
A little on the high side?
There's others that, there's, there's systems that are charged a lot more. Connecticut Water, we're, we're about where the Connecticut Water Company, which is one of the biggest water companies in the, in the state. We're about in, in line with them. We're well over MDC, and we're well over Middletown. But again, if you look across the board, we're on the high side, but not well yet. And some of these systems that you'll find, take Middletown for example, when that project's completed, I can probably pretty much guess that their rates will be increasing. We're on the high side.
Yeah, and it's certainly, Ryan, it's your point, when you look in the paper, you'll see many communities are struggling with increases. And it's increases due to not just usage, but the requirements that DEEP and EPA has for water. And as, like we've been saying for decades, the aging infrastructure. Which is not Portland, that's the United States. And there's aging infrastructure everywhere. So those are all some, some thoughts. But I, I can't emphasize strongly enough. It's very difficult to make ends meet. And as Rick pointed out, and as members of the water and sewer, and Dave is a member of the water and sewer commission, and has a lot of experience in water as well, it's, it's the nature of the industry. It's important to replace, and it's important to maintain. And to be grateful that we do have quality water and ability to have sewers. I mean, a lot of communities don't have it at all. And we're very fortunate that we do have the opportunity to have water in sewer. Many towns don't.
Brian had a suggestion on a couple of occasions about a consultant. And maybe we ought to think about that next budget cycle. Not, can't spend a ton of money, but, but to help us get some direction on where we're going, Adam.
Well, you can, are you going to add to the deficit for water and sewer? Or do you suggest that be general taxation, or we don't know?
I think that would be general taxation, because I think that a consultant, what I'd like to see is, as far as our infrastructure goes, and the possible, I mean, we keep hearing about, we have all these sites that could use water and potentially bring more tax revenue to the town. I mean, that's really where we need to, I think that if, if we have Elmcrest developments coming in, if we have new businesses, then we're not putting the burden so much on the residential taxpayers. And I think that's really where the focus needs to be. It needs to be about bringing businesses to the town. And if we can get water out to more areas, then we can see these rates potentially drop. And we're not putting so much on so few. And I think that that business aspect isn't just a water usage aspect, but it's a town in gen, as a whole. The town would benefit from a consultant coming in and reviewing and potentially giving us ideas on how to fix this. So that's my opinion on it.
Another pair of eyes. Well, we can ask our, also we can ask our legislators to see if they can get a grant for us for a consultant.
Absolutely. I think this is something that the state will have to, would like to see the state to kick in and start working on it, because it's a, it's a big problem. This is not just a, a town problem, this is a huge problem. It's a regional problem too, because even with MDC wanting to take, you know, help us out here, and maybe we go with MDC, they, MDC wants to expand out further too. So it's a regional problem. It's a regional fix. So they're going to be looking to expand their water and sewer out to East Hampton, Marlboro, out that way. So it's, it's not just our town, it's a, it's a regional thing. And I think this is bigger than us. These are kind of the questions I've been posing with you guys for the last couple of years. You know, maybe with MDC, would they wanted to give us some kind of a study to start with? Or do we put up some money and we have, have a, a private consultant? But something's got to be done on that. It's, it's just a matter of numbers. We can't have a 2,000 people bearing a million dollars. It's just not going to work. The numbers aren't going to work. And to bring the infrastructure up like the Sand Hill and the other places where we need to, to bring businesses in, we're having a problem just paying for what we have, never to mind to increase that kind of infrastructure. So we're going to need, this is again, a regional thing. We're, we're going to need bigger and deeper pockets to make this work. It's, it's that simple. It's just, you know, number of customers and how much it costs to provide these customers. And our, and, and the customer base isn't large enough to support some of these things.
If you want to go with a consultant, we can certainly look into that. And bring back some numbers to you, Rick and I will work on that, along with Tom Robinson, and we'll bring that to you, so you can see what it would cost to have an analysis done. Maybe that is something that is of value.
And in the meantime, if there's agreement, we can ask, we can ask them to see if they can, two legislators, and get a grant for, you know.
Some kind of help, yeah.
For the study. If it doesn't work, then we go back and decide in the budget time whether you want to go ahead. I think that's what you were suggesting, weren't you, all along?
Speaking for myself, I, I, there's no question that we need, I need a consultant. I'm not equipped to, to make these decisions. I don't know the information. I mean, if someone can provide me with the information and tell me how this plays off of that, et cetera, et cetera, then I can make some decisions, but I'm not equipped to make these types of decisions.
We'll, we will look into it, but what, can you give me some ideas of specifically, what information are you looking? I mean, I know globally, it's, you know, if we're going to go to a consultant, we'd want to be, what, what would you want to ask a consultant?
I think what, what this board needs to know is what options are available. I hear people talking about adding infrastructure. To me, that makes no sense. You're going to spend all that money on that, and you're going to get a few more customers, and who's going to pay for it? I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, maybe it makes some sense if you got more customers, because you were getting customers from another town, or another city, or something along those lines. But I have no idea.
And the reason I ask is, is again, the broader it is, the more costly it's going to be, and the more deficit you're already going to add to what you have. So I mean, do you have a number in mind of what you'd like to spend? I mean, you could spend 10,000 or 120,000.
You could spend an awful lot of money on that.
And so, and it's all a function of what information do you want? I mean, you could have them look townwide, what's your potential, the, I mean, it's quite a study. And I wouldn't want to shortcut you. So if we're going to be looking, I don't, I mean, and it all depends what you're looking for, what type of a consultant I look for. So again, you know, you need to be specific on what, what exactly do you want? And kind of what price range do you have in mind before you go there? I mean, we could spend, who knows? I mean, I, I, we need some direction.
How, how depth the program is, how, how depth the study would be. I can see it to be all kinds of numbers.
Well, let's start with what are your questions?
You can continue doing the status quo, when you're going to get nowhere, you're going to go deeper in the hole.
I'm not suggesting that.
But what are, what are the questions, I suppose, Brian? If you think about it, as the water and sewer authority, what are, what are some of the questions that have been raised over the last several years?
Is joining, is trying to become an MDC member potentially a cost-saving solution for a current problem? I think that was one of the big issues that we discussed.
Not only cost savings, but also that's where, to increase or to grow our infrastructure. How they would, how they would help us to help themselves. And to, you know, they want to sell more water, they need more things. So they got to bring those, those things out. If those, piggyback, are developing a better infrastructure for us, I think it could be win-win for both.
Because that also kind of could piggyback on the whole East Hampton.
Exactly.
Issue with MDC could potentially want East Hampton as a customer, in which case it would make sense for Portland to align ourselves more.
I think, if I could, I think you also have to ask our customers what they want to see.
Yes.
And I think that our customers may, or may not be willing to pay for what's really needed. I think we need to hear from our customers. Been hearing from some, and many, the ones that call are saying, what are you talking about? Like Rick mentioned earlier, rates that people pay in neighboring towns are way below what you have. What is going on? Why, why are we having to pay this kind of money? So legitimate questions that I think we can answer, and.
Well, unfortunately, we bought too much water than what we needed. I mean, that's kind of the biggest problem, is we signed a deal with MDC, right?
No, no, I need to clarify that, because that, that's not even close. That's not even close. And, and it's, we were under orders from the State Department of Public Health to either filter our water or buy treated water. That was the basic decision. We had two options. We could spend 10 million or so and build a filtration plant, and expand our water system, and provide treated water. Or we could buy filtered water from somebody else, whoever it was. The only game in town, and this is, goes back a long time, but it needs to be said, so you understand. Because you're in a pretty powerful decision-making position. So you should understand why we're where we are. So the option at the time, and it came before the board, what do we want to do? Do we want to, did the Board of Selectmen want to construct a filtration plant? Or did the Board of Selectmen want to enter into an agreement, a long-term agreement with MDC, to purchase filtered water? So that we met federal and state regulations, okay? And there was not much money out there. We, we got some DWS RF money. So those were the only two decisions. How much water we purchased was studied thoroughly, what do we need based on projections? You know, what do we have?
But didn't that include the golf courses, that and stuff?
Yeah, but yeah, and then the, but the golf courses, but again, but the golf courses of, of their own accord, and rightfully so, and due to the economy, they chose to, and they were, they went and, as good businessmen, they found a source of water. Couldn't predict that. The industries that we had that were using, the economy, they left. So nobody did, the Board of Selectmen at the time, and whoever was involved, as I was, and attorneys, and countless hours were spent in, in going through how we got to where we were. Nobody made any errors there. You operated with the information you had. It was, it was almost 20 years ago. I mean, could you foresee? I mean, we operated, we, we operated with information from engineers, with economists, with, I don't know how many lawyers. It took a year and plus to go through a, a permit process. And at the time, and, and I, I would, I would argue that it wasn't a good or bad decision. I mean, it was the, it was the best option at the time, unanimously approved by the Board of Selectmen at the time, with a lot of intelligent selectmen on the board. So, you know, no crystal ball. I guess Bruce was saying, you know, if you find one, let me know. So that needs to be said. You're, where you are, not of anybody's fault. It was good decision-making, with the information we had available, with some very, very intelligent selectmen on that board, with a lot of time spent thinking about it and negotiating it.
You know, I, that wasn't the point. I wasn't.
I'm not sure what you were asking.
Well, no, all I was, was saying was that our, the original contract that we have with MDC is for more water than the town is currently using. That's.
It was the projection at the time.
Well, I know, but all I'm, all I'm saying was that those are the facts. That what, I know, we, we don't have a crystal ball, but at the end of the day, we're still paying for more water than we need.
And we have met with MDC 2005, and we tried to renegotiate the amount, the minimum amount that we had to take. We could certainly approach that again. And I think I gave some numbers on what that would be. The savings, I think, would be about $70,000 a year, based on actual usage and what we need now. So we have a well that's certified to produce a certain amount. We have an annual minimum with MDC. We don't need MDC's minimum, but we, we, and we could ask and say, would you be amenable to reducing the minimum amount that's required?
They'll, they'll say no, because they have way more, they have way more water now.
That's exactly right. They're in the same boat we are.
Exactly.
They want to sell water. And so one reason why they can't sell water is to extend their infrastructure to surrounding towns further out. To get out that way, they have to come through Portland. So I think there is possibly some room, and we could work together, maybe as members, maybe whatever. But that's how we're going to infra, grow our infrastructure and reduce our water rates. Because we need, we need good water for the next 100 years. That's what we're looking here. Make sure that we have the water for our town, for our businesses to grow. And that, and that's what we're trying to, to do here.
So three questions I have for a consultant so far is, is MDC a good option? What do customers want? Does it make sense to expand and where? Are there any other questions?
Should the town of Portland be in this business, so they partner with someone else? Is that, I mean, that's, it's, it's larger issues.
That's one issue, yeah.
So kind of go with the larger ones?
Again, again, the town of Portland even sustained this. I mean, you're going to have to replace all these pipes at some point.
Exactly, sometime. Exactly, sometime. We just don't have the customer base. We don't have, we don't have a million people or 500,000 people. We can't spread that, that number over such a small customer base.
Unfortunately, practically, your options are quite limited. You have, then we probably should go over those two. I mean, you have the choice of trying to find groundwater. Your contract with MDC is up in 14 years, okay? So you could, you can try to renegotiate the contract with MDC, see if they'll change the terms. That's an option. I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent. You could make a concerted effort to try to find groundwater, and Portland is groundwater-rich, but you're going to spend, you're going to commit to millions to try to find groundwater, I suspect. And it's a long process, and you've got diversion permits, and you've got a lot of things. In the long run, if you could find it, probably, that would be your best bet for the long term, but it requires a huge commitment right now of money and time and effort. So that's one. Connect to the MDC is another one. Try to connect to, for example, Middletown, or try to connect to the Connecticut Water Company, but you're 14 years in a contract right now with MDC. So you'd have to break that contract if you did find somebody else that had an amount of water that they practically could get here. Those probably are your options, and your only options.
And in 2005, I look back on our notes, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy out the contract at that time.
That was just to reduce the amount.
That was just to reduce, correct, excuse me, right.
That was to reduce the amount, what I talked about, to save $70,000 a year in water purchase. Right now, your budget is comprised of a third debt, a third water purchase, and a third of operating costs. So you've got a third debt service right now you're trying to pay off. And a third of that, that million-three is purchasing water. And the other third is manpower, operations, supplies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
During that, depending on the structure, if we do go consultant, and the structure, they could take a look at what, additionally, what assets we have, too, and what the value, and who might be willing to pay for those, or how we could use them. You know, seems to me, we have quite a few assets.
We do.
Got some wells, we got, we actually have a reservoir, too, that somebody wanted to update it. So, I mean, there's a lot of information that we could get. I'd like to see some, also, as they look at what we have, I was talking about efficiencies, and Rick was addressing that in terms of staffing, but I was thinking also, are we missing anything? Anything we could do differently to save some money? That's what I guess I was getting at.
That's where a consultant might come in and say, holy smokes, you guys are missing the whole boat. You could have been doing this this time, and your rates would have been right down to what everybody else is.
And I, I agree with Rick. We, we have tried for years to look at how we can, and we have, reduced expenditures. But then you begin to be penny wise and pound foolish, and we're at that level. We've been able to do some improvements, but when you look at some of the bigger water companies and the amount of infrastructure improvements that they, they make, we don't begin to approach that.
I was thinking of things like, like the city of Boston, for example. From their main reservoir in Massachusetts to Boston, their leakage is tremendous. That goes about 40 or 50 percent. And how does that relate to cost? Where are we in that picture right now? Are we in pretty good shape?
I should address that, because that is really important in UConn asset.
Yep.
Right, because we're hot. Our water leakage is hot. We're, right now, I think we're at 23 percent non-revenue water, which is probably like most systems of our age. We have reasonably standard of industry leak detection equipment. We've consulted and used American Water Works has come down. We vary, part of it's water main breaks. So when you get a water main break and you lose a lot of water, which we're working on, High Street was a big plus, but we have a system that's old. For example, 1895 leaded joints, and I couldn't tell you in 20 years how much time, you know, we've spent trying to find the big leak. And Skip Markham, who was here for 35 years, and who I wish was still here, because he really knew the system, knew it better than I do, and we agonized over it. And we basically come to the fact that there's a lot of little, small leaks throughout the entire system rather than a big leak. Now, we have had big leaks, but usually you find them. So unfortunately, and we're not any different than many, most systems, to fix that type of a situation, think of the number of leaded joints there are from the reservoir to Main Street. Each length of pipe is 16 feet long, and you got, I don't know how many miles. So you've got a lot of joints, and each, if each one of those leaks a gallon, a half a gallon a minute over time, you know, but we do diligently try to find leaks, but our leakage is 20, so 23 percent, or right now, or 22, or whatever the magic number, sometimes we've gone up higher. Of the water that you buy exclusively of what we produce with the well, you're not billed. We try to account for it each quarter. We look at our, what we call unaccounted-for water, which would be water such as a fire. We track, that's how I could tell you, you know, whenever they have a fire, we contact the fire department. How many gallons do you think you used? That's not billed out. We have a water main break, it's not billed. We try to see how, we look at our charts, try to find out how many gallons it flowed a minute, how long the leak was. But yeah, we've got high water, high leaks, you know, a lot of non-revenue water. To fix that is way beyond, I mean, like I say, we're not doing anything with our infrastructure, and haven't for a few years.
Yeah.
So you can't, even if I found, you know, when I find a big leak, and we have found it, but they're usually of a short perm, but most of these leaks, I think the high leakage is a result of many, 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 many small leaks. A big one surfaced typically. So that's, we do, and it's a big factor, as most systems do, if they have high, high unaccounted-for non-revenue water, it's a big factor, and lost a lot of money. Maybe a consultant would be able to suggest something there?
So are we set, are we sending this to?
What's your pleasure? Do you feel you have this digested enough? You will get many, many questions.
We should. I mean, I would, you know, I'm hoping that people come, because I feel like that the town, everyone should know about, you know, the problems that we are currently having with water and sewer. And it's, it's something that I don't want people to be shocked when they find out, you know, that we've been running at a deficit for a while now. This is something that people should be aware of, and, and we do, I mean, it's not like we're raising rates because, you know, we just are bored, you know? It's because we really, we have to, and we don't have another choice at this point. We really don't, and it's unfortunate, but it just has to happen. And, and I think that if people come and they know about it, then we can actually explain it to them in person.
So you're talking about the 21st, is that...
Yeah.
But to follow this through, then, you have the public hearing, we get input, and there's discussion, and then the rates are set at a subsequent meeting after that. Suppose we have this plan that's in front of you or in front of us, and this public input, and it's decided to do it a little bit differently. If we do that, do we have to come back with another public hearing, Susan?
Yes.
I think it's going to require more than one public hearing. I think it's going to, this is a large, large, large problem that we're going to have to work on, and we should have the, our citizens have been put on it. Maybe on this first meeting, we could just, you know, show them what we have. I mean, this is for this year, let's stop the bleeding, and from here, you know, what do you want to do? What do we want to do? Do we even want to be in the water business or the town? Do we want to go into, let MDC take care of this? And like you said, Fred, we do have a lot of good assets when it comes to that. We do have a lot of groundwater here, we're going to be, you know, which is, you know, is a plus. We have, like I said, we have the access out to the further towns, which is a plus. I believe we should be working on that. But right now, we have to stop the bleeding so we don't go any, you know, worse. And we can start with that, and then see with the town, how they feel about where we should be going from here.
And remember, it's $3,000 right now a week, isn't it?
I don't think you should be saying that. That, that's not really what it is, it's an accumulated amount.
Well, we're still accumulating a week.
I know, but when you say that, it's hyperbole, and I think what you have to, what you have to say is, you're not collecting enough revenue to meet total expenditures.
True, yeah. But we're still putting, I mean, I'd rather, like, put it in a way that people do understand the severity of it, you know, it's not, it needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed sooner than later, and that's the whole point of why we're trying to get this to a public hearing.
Go to a public hearing, go from there. See what they want to do, which way we, give us some direction.
It's going to be an informational public hearing on these rates, is that what you're going to do then?
Well, I'm, I'm going to look for this group to give some assistance as to how you want to run that public hearing. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of information here. It's not just two or, two or three numbers. You have to really present some information to people.
And possibly at that, at different times, we could have our MDC, give them a presentation to the town also, again, like we have, but a bigger one, something to that, to see what they want to do. So, let's see what their options are.
We're not even there yet, Carl.
No, no, I'm not talking about this coming meeting, I'm saying in future.
But we're not even, we still, I mean, as far as I know, we're still talking about options in general, not, you know...
Absolutely, I'm just saying as an option. Not that that is the option, I said as an option.
Rick, did you want to add something?
I got one for you. I happened to have the pleasure to be here when rates were doubled in 2000, which is significantly more than what you're talking about, and then when sewer rates were nearly tripled. And my recollection, I don't remember things as good as I do, but I mean, a suggestion for you. I mean, there is a lot of information that you have, but if your goal is to stop the bleeding as soon as you can, I mean, the basics here are this. I mean, and I don't, you can get into all kinds of minutia about this thing, but I suspect that one thing that would be very important for a water customer, which I am one, is what, how does, what is my increase? So people really, I think, are not necessarily going to be all interested in the, how did we get here? Where can we go over the next 20 years? And what is the incidental charges? People are going to want to say. I think you're going to want to say to them, I think what you're going to want to say to them is, we have this situation, we are running a deficit. In order for us to make ends meet, we need to increase rates by X percentage, and the impact to the normal customer will be XYZ. And I mean, I can remember, I don't think there was more than a single public hearing when they were doubled, when, when we had to do that to connect to the MDC, and I don't think there was more than a single public, and there was a lot of unhappy people, as there will be this time, but, you know, your pleasure.
I think that's a good point, though, too.
I think as far as rates go, that's, I think, yes, you should have informational information where you're going to go from here.
Yeah, but the average person cares, you know, wants to know how this is affecting their bottom line, and how this is affecting their family. And that's what, we should be ready.
On the second page, excuse me, the third page, I'm going to add an A.09.06, which would be an additional part of the regulations. And in there, we will put that fee that you were speaking of, Fred, for the fire hydrants, which was the 200 per year, $200 per year for 250 meters. And we can add that as an additional part of this draft. With that, is there a motion to have the public hearing held on January 21, 2015, at 7 o'clock here in the Mary Flood Room?
So, in a discussion for one second, that'll be just for what we have here, not any other further discussions. Let's just do this.
This is what the public hearing will be.
Just for this.
But as any public hearing, Carl, you typically have discussions, someone may bring a question up, sure. I mean, people are free to bring up other questions that would be pertinent to this topic.
To the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be fine.
I'll get started, sure.
Sure. So is there a second to Ryan's motion?
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll get this posted in the paper. And as you had indicated last time, we will not have, if anything, in terms of a Board of Selectmen meeting that night, if we don't need a Board of Selectmen meeting, we will not have anything else, because this will take, I think, probably a fair amount of discussion. Hopefully, people will come. Okay, so we'll move on to the next topic on the agenda. Thank you very much, Rick. Let's see, the next item, I believe, is appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments tonight? I have none. We'll move on. No appointments. Revision to the Non-Union Pay Plan, this is a requirement for the Connecticut Minimum Wage Increase. And it should be in your packets. Which is this, and if you look, Michelle enumerated that it's the Parks and Rec Youth Services Counselor One, and the miscellaneous payments election workers, the minimum wage will go to $9.15.
Move adoption with reading.
Seconded by Ryan, motion made by Ryan.
Did you say Ryan or right?
Brian Flood.
Brian Ryan.
Flood made the motion, and Ryan Curley seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. The next is appointment to the Vibrant Communities Initiative Project. And after interviewing three firms, the committee settled on the Cecil Group of Boston, Massachusetts, to provide professional services for a market analysis. This is completely paid for by a grant of $50,000 from the Connecticut Trust for Historical Preservation through the State Historical Preservation Office. Is there a motion for me to, or my designee to execute any and all documents as it pertains to this project?
Motion.
I'm sorry?
Motion made.
Motion made by Carl, seconded by Fred. Any questions? I am expecting to meet with the Cecil Group next week, and I will then let you know the schedule, and I hope that you're able to attend some of the meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Refund of excess payments, and some of these were explained to you previously. Would someone like to make the motion for the refunds of excess payments?
Refund of $14.11 to Christopher Blomville.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ryan Curley, motion made by Brian Flood. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
These sums of $101.47, four times, to James Meadian.
Second.
Same. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
These sums of $63.40, $11.44, $200.85, $337.06, $282.97, $391.97, $63.40, $55.36, $582.81, and $391.97 to Peterson Fuel Oil Inc.
Second.
Also seconded by Ryan Curley. And this had to do with some property transactions that had occurred for these two companies. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Anything on status and committee reports tonight?
Threes look good.
Yes, they do. They do, I've noticed, um, they really do. Any public comment tonight?
In relation to the sidewalks?
This is Shirley Olson of Russell Avenue.
In relation to the sidewalks, the, um, the brownstone sidewalks that are in good condition, and the one that is, two that are in very good condition that I've walked on, basically, are the one at Stonehaven on Main Street, and in front of the, um, Methodist Church. Those two, it's just, the brownstone's not cracked. There's a little bit of a wave in them because of, you know, the settling of the brownstone, but actually, those are the nicest ones to walk on when they're in the shape that they, they should be in. And I noticed that the, um, one of the, um, brownstone was taken out of, um, the corner of East Main Street and, um, Freestone Avenue. And if possible, I would like to see that, if it's not gonna be used, be given to the, um, Methodist Church, because they are missing one that is, um, concrete. And it would, you know, give them back their historical.
You're talking about the brownstone that was along the Trinity Cemetery?
No, on the corner of East Main Street and Freestone Avenue. There was some brownstone there that was very dangerous on the corner.
I think it's still there. Well, there is some along...
There's some on the side by the library, but I think the pieces that were on the other side were taken out. And shortly after, there was the meeting, and then there was a discussion about it. When I was out for a walk, I saw the browns, um, brownstone on the back of, um, a town, big town trucking was being taken away.
Some of the brownstone sidewalks that were on East Main Street were relocated to the floor of the Brownstone Arch Pavilion, located across from the Middlesex Hospital facility.
This just happened a few weeks ago.
Yeah, but the, there are some there.
Yeah, but no, the, um, you know, I saw them being taken away on the tour. And if possible, I'd just like to see that the brownstone be put back in front of the Methodist Church.
Thank you. Okay, informal discussion?
Um, the only, I'm not gonna take any time, but I think we, the, as I indicated, the legislature starts beginning of January. We have one meeting before, I think it's the same day that they actually start. But I had some thoughts about contacting, uh, you know, contacting the legislators. And I think at that meeting, we could bring back some thoughts, so, uh, you know, if you want to go forward that, then we could tell the two legislators, we need these bills put in, and...
At which meeting, Fred?
So, I think it's the seventh of January.
January, okay.
Yeah, but, right, well, if we have a discussion, if everybody thinks about it a little bit.
Sure.
Comes up with something, if you do, we'll, we'll, it's a very, the, the agenda is just a conceptual, so it's not like we have to put a lot of detail into it, a lot of lea- or legal language, it's a very conceptual. And that's why I mentioned the side, maybe, maybe we ask them to who the sidewalks are.
Right.
Look for mine, adjacent to, uh, high school, tie it in with the schools.
Right.
And Susan, um, I just wanted to see if, um, we'd be getting an update, uh, just as far as, uh, police matters go, if you're on, Ron, at some point in the next year?
Sure. We'll be happy to do that. I will, uh, ask him to come in as he does periodically and give us an update on, on, ongoing investigations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Oh, another thing? Yes, I'm back, because I forgot, and it was that little gentleman down there that reminded me that there is going to be, there's a potential to be, in relation to sewers, that there's gonna be a state mandate issued in relation to towns having to take care more so of the runoff of water related to the cleaning of the streets. And I live on a street that's a hill off Main Street, and the water comes off Main Street, which is sand and junk put on by the state that's coming down our street. But the state is putting it there, the state should have some responsibility in helping clean it up. And there's also, in our town, there's Route seventeen A, that's a state road, and Route sixty-six. Those are like the, almost the borders around the town. So, I don't think the town should have to bear all of it when you have state trucks combing in and putting sand and putting that chemical on the road.
Good point, thank you, Shirley. I don't have any updates on the follow-up items for tonight, other than we did establish the public hearing. And I don't have any information for an executive session tonight, nothing to add. So, with that, um, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Ryan Curly.
Second.
Seconded by Brian Flood. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries.
It's the last meeting, I bet you're...